Committee meeting of the Finance and Personnel Committee. We have three ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 6907, 7007, and 7107. I'm going to talk about them in reverse order because 7107 is the only one that we really haven't addressed in committee before. This is, it just says, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. And if you look at your detail sheet, we have Section 1, 2007 appropriation ordinance is amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance $7,000 to underage drinkers fund transaction class 300. There was, if you remember, a couple of years ago, the municipal court purchased the old state highway patrol garage building on Columbus Road. Somehow that transaction, the electric bill never got billed to the correct people, so they had a $6500 bill to pay. They have done that. They've written that check, it's taken care of, but they took it out of this fund, the underage drinkers fund, and we just need to replace that from the unappropriated balance in that fund. It's their money, we're just transferring it for them. The second part of this ordinance is from the unappropriated balance, $1,000 to the general fund other administration, transaction class 600. This is a, and the fund is 101120. This is a refund line that the other administration level uses to make refunds for certain fines that people pay, not traffic fines, but for instance, a fine for a fire alarm, not emergency fire alarm. And in this case, we have a resident who, being the good citizen, actually paid that fine twice.
Really?
And so now we need to refund that $150 that he paid, he or she paid twice, and there's not enough money in this fund. So we simply need to put $1,000 from the general fund into this fund, this refund line for other admins so they can make this refund and have enough to cover any other refunds that might occur throughout the year. So this, and that particular part of this ordinance would be best served if we could suspend and pass it now because it is a bill that, this is a refund that's got, this person's been waiting for for a while, and we really, it's incumbent upon us to do that. If that's okay, I'll ask for suspension on this one. Paul?
Okay, so it's $1,000 we're going to suspend rules on, if I understand correctly.
Yes, but...
They're probably waiting for vacation money or something like that.
But the $7,000 for the court will go along with that.
And that's, do you have any idea how long that bill was misplaced or sent to the, I just wonder how much, $6,500?
Ever since that was purchased, and I believe it was a couple of years ago.
2002?
2002?
About three years.
Almost three years?
Two thousand...
Just wondering.
So if we don't get a bill, then...
It was actually paid by someone else, and we just...
Oh, is that...
Okay.
So, yeah.
We're actually...
They either shut that electric off a long time ago, somebody was just not paying it. It was not ever, it did not ever come to the city for anyone to pay.
Okay.
It went to the previous owner, who's been paying it for three years, got audited, found out, and said, nope, not doing that anymore. So the electric company refunded their money, so now we need to, you know, go ahead and pay that to keep the electric going, or they're not going to continue service. And there's plenty of money in that fund.
So, and it, so the bill is taken care of, we're just appropriating more money into that part.
Okay, just wondering.
So, any other questions about that one? Okay, we're going to back up and just touch 7007 that we did talk about in committee last time. This is an ordinance authorizing prior year expenditures for engineering of the city garage, that's drainwell closure plan, project 62, and declaring an emergency. As we talked about in committee last time, Mr. Hazlitt discovered when he was preparing to pay some current bills that we have appropriated money annually since 2002, but we have not passed an expended, a bill, an ordinance authorizing expenditures. So this is simply a bill authorizing expenditures for prior years from these funds, internal service fund, about $64,000, EPA litigation fund, about $205,000, and from the street fund, about $88,000. And in Section 2, we're authorizing the Service Safety Director to expend up to $60,000 from the street fund this year, year 2007. And I would probably ask to suspend that next time, so it can happen in July. Paul?
So the Section 2 is actually for future engineering of Project 62?
Yes, current year.
Current years.
Yeah. Which we do expect some bills, some invoices to be coming from Burgess and Nyepal with regards to that in the near future, but we don't have those in hand now.
Okay, and that's coming from the street fund?
Internal service.
Well, no, that's just, this year's one, the $60,000 says to street fund.
I don't have a copy of it.
It says $60,000 from the street fund.
Is that going to be divvied up down the line, or is that just where it's coming from straight on?
That's just where it's coming from, straight up.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my question, although I'm not a member of the committee, there used to be a basic pattern of assessment, and I don't know if this is following that.
Or is it coming from...
Mr. Hazlitt, you...
You might not know.
Yeah, let's see. Trying to remember, because it changed here a couple of years ago. 7, yeah, 747, 636, 5323, that's, that was the EPA litigation fund. And then in, looks like in 2003 is when the mayor switched it over to 220717, which is the street fund, rather than the 747. So that's been, that's been charged into that since 2003.
Okay, just wondered.
Before next time, we could read, take a look at that old ordinance. Because I don't remember having any kind of discussion of it, so it's before your time.
This got befuddled because it became part of the budget as opposed to being handled as a separate project. And it's kind of odd for a project to go through 5323 funds instead of one of the 5500 series, like a capitalized project. So it kind of slipped through the cracks because it got included in the overall appropriation budget rather than a special project budget.
So we'll try to have a little more information in two weeks, but...
Do you want to suspend rules on this tonight?
No.
Next time.
Next time, in two weeks. And finally, 6907, again, which we talked about, we, we have an ordinance coming up for second reading, which we will suspend on because it has some monies in it for the Community Corrections Act grant that the municipal court gets, and that is a July-to-July grant, so we need to suspend on this other ordinance, so that the appropriation is ready for this grant fund to come in first of July. But we did discover last week that this is one of those grants that the, actually, the mayor has to sign for, as he does for a good number of other grants. So this ordinance simply authorizes the mayor to execute this grant through the Ohio Department of Re-Delegation and Declaring Emergency, so I'm going to ask for suspension on 06907, so that this can be signed by July 1st. Since this is, this may well be our last meeting in June, certainly our last regular meeting in June. Okay, Paul?
Okay, so we're suspending rules on 6707 on second reading, and 69 on first reading. Is that what I'm hearing?
And 71.
And 71.
Actually, please. Auditor, head?
Yes, I need suspension on 64, 65, and 66.
64?
Second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Okay.
I was going to tell you after the, in between now and the next meeting, but if you want to know.
Okay, these...
I mean, we did talk about that, we know these are due July 11th. And although we have another meeting, because of the size of these bonds, they go out to bid nationally, and that has to be done a week to 10 days before, before they're due, and then it's awarded. So actually, June 28th is when we're going to accept bids on those.
Okay, so these are ordinances. The first is for notes with regards to payment of the parking garage debt. The second is notes for the purpose of paying on East State Street debt. And the third one, 066, combines those two because our bond counsel can get a better deal for us combining those two large notes into one. So as the auditor suggests, again, it's a timing issue.
If it wasn't for the July 4th holiday, we probably could have waited, but anyway.
Okay.
He doesn't want to, so...
So, we had, I knew we had several, this is even several more that we need to suspend on, so I wanted everybody to be aware of what was coming. If there are any questions, any further questions? May I ask you to look?
No, I was just wondering if my central avenue thing is on here.
Central avenue?
No.
No.
So I had a half hour meeting, and there's no, nothing from...
House repair?
Yeah.
We may not need an ordinance on that.
Oh, okay, good. If no questions, then that, we're adjourned for Finance and Personnel. We'll meet again in 15 minutes.
You know what?
I'm on, yeah, we're on. Like the call to order on the meeting of Athens City Council, it's almost 7:30, and it's Monday, the 18th of June, at 7 something, 20 something PM. And we have a forum now with six members of council present. Under communications, I have a note from the Ohio Department of Division of Liquor Control, asking if we have any opinions on the creation of what is called a new license, C12, Athens Save-A-Lot, 810 East State Street.
910.
And 910, I told you, I told you. Okay, so we will perhaps discuss that at our next committee meeting if anybody would like to file an appeal. 7:13, 2007 is the time, and we've done that before. And now we have reports and communications from other elected officials. Mr. Hunter?
I know we could.
Mr. Bia, so yes. What about the water level in the aquifer, any?
My guess is it's getting lower.
Okay, thank you. How was that, how was that from out of left field? Okay, Service Safety Director?
No report.
Auditor?
No report.
Thank you. All right, ordinances for third reading. 5907, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to Washington on Saturday, September 8th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the First Annual Business Fair. Councilmember Flowers?
Thank you, Madam President, I move adoption of 05907.
Second.
As councils familiar, this is a business fair that is being put on by the Student Senate at Ohio University, which is being headed up by Amanda Estock, who's been here to talk and meet with us in regards to this business fair. She's also met with Ray and the Chamber in getting this put together and sort of catering to students and bringing in the local businesses to this business fair and familiarizing the students who come to OU with all types of local businesses that we have here in Athens, kind of what, you know, our community thrives on. So that'll be taking place on September 8th. We'll be doing the street closing from 11:00 to 5:00, and banning the parking from 7:00 to 5:00, but the event is actually from 1:00 to 3:00 on that day. So all businesses are encouraged to participate and get a hold of the Chamber if they want to participate. Jim?
Is this the, is this the first weekend that students are back in town, or is it the second?
This is...
Not moving.
This is the weekend after move-in. This is the first weekend that they're here. This is after the first week of classes.
After, okay.
Yes.
We did change this.
Any other comments? Carol?
Just a reminder that Larry Payne has said that this is the first time that a Student Senate liaison to City Council and Chamber of Commerce has taken on something like this, and he's been extremely pleased, and even to the point that very recently, the location was changed because the uptown business people said, what's the point of having an event in Baker Center if you want the uptown businesses to participate? And also, they're partnering with the art market, so the event's a bit more festive, and this is just a really a model thing for a student to put together.
Okay, any other comments? Paul?
And this being the first one, they will keep going year in and year out.
Yeah, hopefully this is somewhat like, you know, the vacation day, you know, students put it on, it really worked out the first year, and hope to continue on for subsequent years.
Okay, any other comments, audience? Hearing none. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of 5907, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ordinance passes 6-0. 0607, an ordinance closing portions of Court Street and Washington Street on Friday, June 22nd, July 27th, and August 17th, 2007, for a cruise-in and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Flowers?
Thank you, Madam President, I move adoption of 0607.
Second.
Thank you. As council, again, is familiar, this is an annual street ordinance for the cruise-in that Bill Omen and his group puts on every year, and they're just requesting to have the street closed for these three different days for their cruise-in.
Any comments, questions, statements? Hearing none. All those in favor of 6007, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes 6-0. 6207, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a two-ton dump truck for the street department. Councilmember Flowers?
Thank you, Madam President, I move adoption of 06207.
Second.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing, of course, Service Safety Director to purchase the two-ton dump truck. As we discussed in committee, and I believe at least the first reading, that the amount for the truck is $105,000. I know that Paul had asked at one time, is that a little more than it usually is? And yes, that is because we're doing a stainless steel bed, I believe, and also there's a strip of metal that goes along the bottom of the truck that just, you know, will uphold longer throughout the weather and such, so since it is a shovel truck. Paul?
Is there any way to make sure it's fuel-efficient considering the gas prices?
I don't know if that's the one that, is the two-ton run now the one that does the bio, not the biodiesel, but the grease truck? No, that's different. I don't know, I guess, we could look into it.
Okay.
So as far as...
For next time?
Yeah, so...
Well, it's going to go out...
Well, because we get our, you know, we get our fuel from... A little late.
Oh, you...
Right, so...
But I mean, this is to, to purchase it. I assume that they have models out there now. Something must be...
I'll ask Andy to look in, look into it.
Just wondering.
Other comments in 6207, audience? Hearing none. All those in favor of 6207, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, 6207 passes 6-0. Ordinances for second reading. 6107, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Section 7.04.40, processions and parades, permit required. 06407, an ordinance providing for the issuance of 200,000 of notes by the City of Athens in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of renovating the city's parking garage and declaring an emergency.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to move that we consider ordinance 6407 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Earlier in a committee meeting, the auditor pointed out that since, actually, we'll be suspending, or asking suspensions for the next two ordinances also, so this is a relatively large purchase of notes, and our bond counsel can get us a better deal if he rolls them together, so I'd like to suspend the rules on this and the following two ordinances.
Any other comments on suspension? Hearing none. All those in favor of suspending the rules on 6407, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules are...
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 6407.
6-0, second.
Okay, this is authorizing issuance of $200,000 worth of notes for paying part of our debt on the city parking garage for some repairs that were made several years ago. At this moment, we owe $350,000 on this debt. This note issue will pay off $150,000 worth of that debt and have about $50,000 in bond fees and interest, et cetera.
Other comments?
$15,000, I just want to, about $15,000 in interest and fees.
Oh, so it'll actually pay off a little more than $350,000.
Okay, other comments on 6407? Do you want to re, do you want to comment?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of 6407, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes 6-0. 06507, an ordinance providing for the issuance of 1.7 million of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purchase of paying part, for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency.
Madam President, I move that we consider ordinance 6507 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
For the same reasons we discussed earlier.
Other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of suspending the rules on 6507, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
At this time, Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 6507.
Second.
This is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $1,700,000 of notes. At this moment, we owe $2 million on the cost of improving East State Street, so this will pay off about $300,000 toward that debt.
Other comments on 6507? Paul?
So the rates, 6%, is that what I'm seeing here for the bond?
I believe it's 6%. Okay. So, yeah, this one.
Okay, other comments on 6507?
9%.
9%.
9.
9? Okay. Other comments on 6507? Hearing none. All those in favor of 6507, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6507 passes 6-0. 6607, an ordinance consolidating two bond anticipation notes of the City of Athens into a consolidated note issue, and establishing the terms of such consolidated note issue and declaring an emergency.
Madam President, I move that we consider ordinance 6707 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Because this is consolidating the prior two issues. Did, you need to say something?
It's 6607.
Did I say something?
You said 67.
Okay, 67. I'm going to do that.
People can do, get a group rate going here.
6507 under suspension of the rules, I'm sorry.
Other, other comments on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 6607.
Second.
Again, this is a combination, a consolidation of the two prior ordinances. Auditor, did you need to say something?
Well, I was just going to clarify Paul's question a minute ago about the interest rate. The interest rate is not set for these. It says not to exceed 6%. And as I said, on June 28th, these will go out to bid nationally, and we will have to sit by our phones for just a very small amount of time, and people will call in and give us their bids and their tickets, and then we give it back to the bond counsel, and he takes the lowest bid, and so that's how that works. It will be not to exceed 6%. The amount is actually not set yet.
Any idea what it is right now?
Did you suspend?
No, you know, we get really good...
As it goes out?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say what will happen with that, I really don't know. When we, our loans and notes that we borrow locally, we get exceptionally low interest rates on those, and we've been very lucky, and even our bond counsel will tell you that. So it's hard to say when we go out, you know, nationally, if they'll be quite that low.
Just asking.
I don't know, I'll let you know, June 28th is our day.
Good. Other questions or comments on 6607? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6607 passes 6-0. 6707, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance.
Madam President, I move adoption. No, I don't. Madam President, at this time, I move that we consider 06707 under suspension of the rules. This, this ordinance includes some language which allows the municipal court to accept some money from a community corrections grant, which actually runs from July to July, and we need to suspend it a little so that this will be cleared by July 1st for them to accept that money.
Other comments on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules on 6707, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 6707.
Second.
There are a couple of things happening here. First of all, in Section 1, it's, we're appropriating from the unappropriated balance $9,000 to an internal service fund. This is to pay for a hydraulic lift in the service garage. We talked about this lift, which was becoming unsafe and needs to be replaced. The second action is $25,000 to the general fund, 101120, transaction class 300. That $25,000 is to pay fees for engineer, our engineers to review site plans that are presented us, to us by developers, or proposals within the city. The funds would be expended for our engineers, but when, when permits are issued for these developments, they would repay these funds, so we would, we would recover this money. And finally, we would be, the Community Corrections Grant is approximately $65,000. We would appropriate $33,000 to transaction class 100, and about $3,000 to transaction class, where are we, $3,000, fund 235. So that's only, that's about $35,000. But that, that grant is divided in half. We're only appropriating the first half this year, and in January, we'll have to appropriate the other half of that total amount.
I think we're...
And finally, I'm sorry.
We were told that runs different times, is that what you're thinking?
Right. Instead of our calendar year, it runs from July to July. So, so we have dealt with the last half of that fund up to this time, and now we're dealing with a new grant, which would begin in July, so that's what causes us to need to suspend this. And finally, the municipal court is asking us to transfer some funds from the remaining grant, from their, from their materials line, $2,200 into their salary line, and so that would allow them to utilize... line, and so that would allow them to utilize, better utilize the money that is left over from this current grant, about twenty-two hundred dollars.
Very nicely done. Any comments on sixty-seven oh seven? He's very clear on it, wasn't he? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is, passes six zero. Oh, sixty-eight oh seven, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title Twenty-nine Housing Regulation, Section Twenty-nine oh six oh five Insurance. Ordinances for first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Community Corrections Act grant through the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Sands.
Madam President, I moved, I ask that we consider ordinance sixty-nine oh seven under suspension of the rules.
Second.
As we discussed just a moment ago in committee, well, let me back up. As we just spoke about in previous ordinance, municipal court has been granted a community corrections grant of about sixty-five thousand dollars, and now the mayor has to sign with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction to receive that grant, which will then be passed to the municipal court. So we need to suspend on this so that the mayor or his, the acting mayor can perform that action by July first.
Other comments on suspension of the rules, sixty-nine oh seven? Hearing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended, six zero.
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance sixty-nine oh seven.
Second.
And I think it's the same thing that I just said.
Other comments from the council or the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor of sixty-nine oh seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted, six zero. Oh, seventy oh seven, an ordinance authorizing a prior year expenditure for engineering of the city of Raj-Rick brick closure plan, project sixty-two, and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Sands.
Madam President, this is first reading, I'm not asking for suspension.
Well, good for you.
We, the Service Safety Director, Mr. Hazlett, discovered that we had appropriated money to make payments on our drainwell closure plan and the engineering that is necessitated by that since the year two thousand and two up until the present time, but we haven't actually passed an ordinance which authorizes expenditures, although those expenditures have been made. So this is just a little catch-up legislation. It is authorizing prior year expenditures of sixty-four thousand dollars from the Internal Service Fund, two hundred and five thousand dollars approximately from the EPA Litigation Fund, and eighty-eight thousand dollars from the street fund. And in section two, we're authorizing the Service Safety Director to expend up to sixty thousand dollars, again from the street fund, transaction class three hundred for engineering on this closure plan. So this is, the ordinance is partly a housekeeping ordinance, and in section two, it actually authorizes current year expenditures.
Other comments on this or questions, statements? I think we had a, and I think this must be pretty close to, we had a plan that assessed costs on the basis of vehicles.
Number of vehicles.
Number of vehicles, and I think the Internal Service Fund covers part and the street fund the other. So it looks fairly close. All right, any other comments on oh seventy, oh seven? Oh, seventy-one oh seven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and seven appropriation ordinance? The councilmember Sands, go.
Madam President, I ask that we consider ordinance seventy-one oh seven under suspension of the rules.
Second.
We talked about this in committee just a little while ago. Section one of this ordinance asks us to appropriate from the unappropriated balance of the underage drinkers' fund, seven thousand dollars to transaction class three hundred for the municipal court. The municipal court has paid a, a current year bill for some bills, electrical bills at the old state highway patrol post, approximately seven thousand dollars. They, they paid that from transaction, from underage drinkers' fund, number two thirty-two, transaction class three hundred. We're simply replacing that money from the unappropriated balance in that, in that fund. There's a second action that we're taking. We're appropriating one thousand dollars to the, the general fund, other administration, fund one oh one, one twenty. This is a fund that the other admin area uses to pay refunds to citizens for certain fines that they've paid. We have a citizen who inadvertently paid a false alarm fine twice, and so we need to refund that second payment. At the moment, this fund doesn't have enough money to make that refund, so we have someone waiting for their money, citizen waiting for their money. This money will allow us, this appropriation will allow us to make that refund. That's why we're suspending, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on suspension of the rules? On seventy-one oh seven? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules on seventy-one oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
And finally, Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance seventy-one oh seven.
Second.
Again, this will simply allow us to, to replace some money to the underage drinkers' fund and to put some funds into the other admin line, which will allow refunds to be made to citizens for overpayments.
Other comments on seventy-one oh seven? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, seventy-one oh seven, it passes, six zero. Oh, seventy-two oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a truck for the water department and declaring an emergency. This is first reading, and my understanding is there are no more two thousand and seven trucks, so expect some modification of this at future readings. Oh, seventy-three oh seven, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title Seven Traffic Code, Section Seven oh nine, point nine nine, penalties, and declaring an emergency. Emergency, let's see. And I'd like you all to look at that because I think I need to move to suspend the rules on oh seventy-three oh seven, because we will start collecting the higher fees for, with our effort that we had before. So I'm moving to suspend the rules in order to meet the July one deadline.
Second.
Okay. Yes. Paul? We're suspending the rules. Anything on suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules on oh seventy-three oh seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, that was for...
All right, sharpen up now. The rules are suspended.
I can't read and talk at six.
Neither can I. No, she voted for it. Otherwise, we were in a world of trouble. I move adoption of seventy-three oh seven.
Second.
Okay. Fellow councilmembers, seventy-three oh seven is an item that passed through in our earlier overall omnibus, increased the rates in parking issues. At that time, we decided to, as I recall, and I, that we were going to leave the twenty-four hour parking amount at twenty dollars, and that's what this does. Okay? Yes, Mr. Wild? Do you remember differently?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So this just covers the twenty-four hour?
Yes.
And this is the item?
Mr. Sands?
It does, but there's some language that follows, that if the fine is paid within five days of the violation, if it goes over that, then the fine could go up to thirty five.
Other comments on seventy-three oh seven? Hearing, and we did as we promised, then, if we pass this. Seventy-three oh seven, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted, six zero. Oh, seventy-four oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise, accept bids where necessary, and enter into contract for design and construction of a soccer complex. Councilmember Patterson.
Yes, this is, oh, yeah, I don't have to move to do anything. This is the ordinance to put out for bids, the soccer complex, and the budget includes a variety of different things. So the total appropriation is a hundred and thirteen dollars. So that's broken down...
Hundred and thirteen thousand.
Hundred and thirteen thousand. It's those zeros. Hundred and three thousand moved into the recreation fund to pay it, and ten thousand dollars to capital improvement. And some of these expenditures have already been made, and the percentage of the project that's actually being funded by grants is a hundred and five thousand, or seventy-three percent of the total project.
Any other comments on seventy-four oh seven? Paul?
So section three talks about a total of a hundred and forty-four thousand? Did you say it was a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty?
Well, the total budget's one forty-four, one oh, or one six oh.
Okay.
But the appropriation amount needed was one thirteen.
Okay. And the difference is grant, are grants or other funds?
Things that have already been done.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, that, that part of it, that you're talking about, okay, great.
Other comments, seventy-four oh seven? Jim?
What do we, what's in a soccer complex?
Well, the laundry list of what this covers is engineering, irrigation, turf contracts, restroom contracts, sewer line, pump, power line relocation, soccer goals, architects' fees, trees contingency.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Oh, seventy-five oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to hire an events planner and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Patterson.
Madam President, I move to amend seventy-five oh seven, or whatever number we're on.
Second. Events planner? Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Okay. Just some wording changes here that we thought it would clarify that we're not talking about a permanent position in the city. So the amendment would be, in section one, the safety service director is hereby authorized to enter into a professional service contract with an events planner. The title would reflect the same, and then under section four, it would say in the third line, in order that the contract will be in place for planning the two thousand and seven Halloween event.
Okay. We have an amendment? It was moved and seconded, did we have a second on that amendment? No? Okay.
I seconded the amendment.
Seconded by flowers. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Paul?
So this is to actually make it a consultant, no benefits, just contract down?
Exactly. And just to clarify that, that was always the intention, but it's just so nobody thinks that we're hiring a permanent position to be an employee of this city and receive benefits and so on and so forth.
Okay. And do we have a clear idea of what the duties will be at this point?
Just on the amendments?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on the amendments? Amendments? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry you have to be so draconian. All those in favor of the amendments stated to enter into a professional contract in the title and in section one and section four, the contract position will be available for, language similar to that? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seventy-five oh seven is amended.
So, no, Paul. Actually, I would like to discuss more at the committee meeting next week, and I think that we can address that a little bit. I'm somewhere in the neighborhood of thinking the less that we say, the better, and less there are some very specific things that we want to insist on one way or the other. Now, I know you received voluminous notes from Vachenka concerning objectivity and openness and so on and so forth, and I must say, I agree with all of that, if that means that we, we don't go in with a prejudicial idea of exactly what we want, and we allow the Service Safety Director to make some, some choices there. And that being said, there are some questions that, that we could address if we want to, to make it more specific, and some of the things that I thought have been mentioned are, come on in, I've had these notes. Well, one of them is, would we consider the events planner developing a not-for-profit group? This was something that Debbie has mentioned. To me, being totally open to anything allows for that, if that's the best proposal that comes forward, if it makes sense when someone comes up with a plan and says, this, this is what I'd like to do, and this is why. I don't want to close us off to that particular choice. The other huge question is alcohol. Would the city be interested in participating in having beer on the street for Halloween? This has been one of the suggestions that comes forward, has come forward in terms of making it possible to pay for the event. Debbie mentioned this last time and talked about ComFest. I've since had a couple of conversations about that. And again, it's something I think that we should remain open to, that if that's something that the legalities could indeed be worked out on. I don't see it as our purview to necessarily make an absolute statement of that it should be only non-alcohol sponsors. That eliminates some important folks that make some money off of Halloween and could be returning that by sponsoring. Paul?
So you plan to have a committee meeting next Monday?
I do.
Okay. And is the Clean, can you find out before then that the Clean State Halloween is actually a nonprofit itself? Is that actually a regular organization, or is that...
I do not believe so.
Okay.
But that would be part of the question.
Okay.
Applying for, does that seem appropriate to us? And part of that question is back to the ownership. Do we want the city to have ownership, or would it be possible for a not-for-profit to have ownership but partner with the city in terms of legalities? And this is the model that ComFest has. Debbie?
First of all, I wanted to thank you for using the tourism fund rather than general revenue in drafting of the ordinance. And secondly, I just want to clarify that you said something about the city getting involved with selling beer, perhaps, and that's not what I...
Right.
Suggested, that the, the model that's used with ComFest and with Boogie on the Bricks is that there is a nonprofit that applies for a permit and manages that. And I mean, I think that that is a real question, because I, I don't think the city needs to have more ownership of Halloween. I think there, there needs to be a way that it can be run better, but I don't think people want us to take on more and do more with that. So if there's an effort toward capacity building so that a nonprofit can, you know, make proposals the way ComFest does, where ComFest, in order to get their street closing permit, they're required to pay off-duty police officers and provide porta-potties and clean up the park and do all those things. and provide porta-potties and clean up the park and do all those things. So the City of Columbus is just giving them the permit to close the street, and they're meeting all the conditions to receive that permit.
Right. But they are working very much in cooperation with the City of Columbus. And that's why I feel like if we don't comment on that, that that allows for that openness to all ideas. And if somebody can present a legal, sound system, not sound system.
That too.
A sound system that would allow us to enter into such an agreement, then I don't want to eliminate that possibility upfront.
So this will be explicitly on the agenda next week, right?
On the committees.
The meeting, committee meeting.
Yes. And we can put together a description if we want to.
And that'll be the, okay. It'll be meeting while council. Any other members wishing to speak, audience members? Robert? Name an address, please.
My name is Robert Sumney. I live at 25 Rye Wood in Athens. And I would like to basically support Councilwoman Phillips in the direction that she's trying to take the Halloween activities. I don't really think that the city needs more ownership of the event. I think it needs less. I also am not in favor at this time of an events planner, simply because I think that, at this point, council is rushing into something that if you haven't even got a clear definition of what this person is supposed to be doing, and you're going to kind of work this along as you continue to vote for the ordinance, you know, I really think that, once again, it's hasty. I think that we haven't explored the idea of a volunteer organization under the direction of the city service director. I think that would be a much better way to go, that if you eventually wanted to have an events planner, that they would have more experience from this volunteer organization that could draw up a lot of the issues, a lot of the problems. The other thing is, I really question how much money the city can make back. First of all, you'd be losing the additional money of what you're paying the events planner, in addition to the $60,000, $70,000 that we're already losing on Halloween, with no guarantee that you're going to be making anything back. The other thing I would ask about the events planner situation is, what would the criteria be for that person's success or failure in terms of evaluating what they've done? If you, you know, are still going ahead with trying to pass the ordinance, but at the same time, bringing this up from the rear, I just don't think that's good planning on the part of city council. I don't think that you need to be hasty about this. You know, Halloween has existed in this town for 27, 28 years. And I really don't think that there's this particular need for a rush to judgment at this point, to hire a person like this that would just increase the city's ownership of this event. Finally, you know, I've been told by a number of residents, I was reminded of Carol Harder bringing the marching band up on Halloween Eve or Halloween. And basically, that's how the whole event started. That would suggest to me that Ohio University has some direct ownership issues in this as well. And perhaps Councilwoman Flowers could even go back to Dr. Smith or President McDavis and ask if perhaps the students are willing to have three or four dollars individually assessed to their general fund, that they could reimburse the city for the cost of securing with the police and the cost of cleanup afterwards. Thank you very much.
Other comments from the audience?
Okay. I would like to state, 07507, as we've been speaking, I think that nobody means to imply that the administration hasn't done an admirable job up till now of making it a safe and clean operation. It's just whether, the question is really whether we're going to go the next step. As good as it could be, I guess, is what I always think. And I don't think many of you would disagree with that, with the safety and the rest being, keeping Little Red Riding Hood at, or no, Little Bull Peep at bay was always important. 7607, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 27th and 28th, 2007, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Councilmember Patterson?
Madam President, this is one of our two regular ordinances for Halloween. The only change this year is that we are extending that possibility clear to Mulberry rather than Preston Street.
Other comments?
I have a question, just because there's a bicycle lane down there. If the close to vehicle traffic covers that part of bicycle traffic?
I'd ask somebody who would interpret if bicycles are vehicles.
And the fact of the matter is that that area has been used to park vehicles for the entertainment, correct?
Generally, Preston Street area has been used.
And so there really has not been access to that portion in the lands a couple of years.
If the administration would like to get a position on that? I mean, whether bicycles would be banned from those bike lanes on South Court Street?
Yeah, I'd have to consult directly with the police chief. But I would think that a bicycle is a vehicle. It's a non-motorized vehicle.
That's what the mayor always says, so I assume that.
Paul?
There is a third ordinance, usually suspending the noise portion ordinance for Halloween as well.
Did we do that already?
So that should be included in the next sooner or later as well.
Okay.
You just said two, that's fine, I don't see it here.
No, you're right. It's my idea.
More? Okay. Any other comments on 7607? Okay. 7707, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 1104, vending, pedaling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 27th and 28th, 2007, Halloween weekend. Councilmember Patterson?
Madam President, this is an ordinance just exactly like last year's in terms of vending.
Comments on this? All right. So now we have a one reading resolution. Boy, that's a tough one. R1007, a resolution requesting the city's planning commission consider amending the zoning code regarding off-street parking. Councilmember Phillips?
Madam President, I move adoption of R1007. We've discussed this resolution fairly extensively in our last committee meeting, and we've talked about it over several meetings recently. This is related to the request to rezone part of Court Street as B2D. In our discussions, one of the major issues that was brought to our attention was a concern about the possible loss of some parking spaces in that part of town, that there were 134 spaces currently used for commercial that could possibly change over to residential if we make this zoning change. So the committee recommendation was that we request the planning commission to go back to the earlier language, stating that the parking garage, parking would be counted for businesses that are within 500 feet of the property line to the parking garage. There's a map attached that shows where that line is. And the map was created from the edge of the parking garage. So it's a little bit bigger than the earlier map, which went, I think, from the middle of the parking garage. So.
Liptoid, spheroid. Any other comments on R1007 from council? Okay, this is simply asking, submitted from the audience. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of R1007, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Okay. Announcements and other business. We have a committee meeting next week, and we already have the Halloween question on there with respect to the duties and evaluation concerning that person. I would like to ask the indulgence of council to have four different citizen groups in my ward are requesting speed bumps. And there's quite a bit of diversity in the way they're approaching it. And I was hoping that anyone who'd like to discuss speed bumps could show up at 6:30 next Monday night. About a half-hour session for all members of council interested in that topic. And Ray said he would be there. And there is a developing policy, different from the one we've seen before. And I hope that at least we can clarify it with the various citizens groups. I had one group on the same street, one group that was talking to me, another group that was talking to someone else, and they were getting different stories. And then we've got to get our stories straight. So that's 6:30 till 7:00. And then whose committee is on next week? Who has it?
The CDBG.
Oh, I have a CDBG public hearing at 7 o'clock, 7:15. Who's on? Amy?
Yes.
Okay.
For parking.
Parking?
And, yeah, we'll just keep it at parking. That'll probably be long enough.
You think it'll be about 45 minutes?
Well, depending on how much information I can gather this week, hopefully.
Okay. And then probably 8 o'clock with Halloween. Anyone else? Paul?
Let me try environment, maybe, depending on what I get worked out.
Okay. So think about this. If, this will be the really pivotal, pivotal, pitiful, maybe, too. Pivotal meeting, I can't get it out. Because we have the 2nd, the 9th, and the 16th of July, or two regular meetings and one in between, to get the business in this done, if we're going to do anything from these. And I would say that my noise materials will be out on the 2nd, and I would like to have a special, future, future. Anyone else wanting a meeting on the 25th? We have environment, traffic, Halloween, and then the 6:30 meeting for those who wish.
I have one other announcement.
Yes.
On Tuesday, the, what is that, the 26th? I don't know.
26.
26, next week, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, the Bicycle Safety Subcommittee will meet again, downstairs in the conference room, first floor, 5:30 PM on the 26th, Tuesday.
Okay, so we have lots of options. Carol?
Tomorrow morning, 9:30, wellhead protection at the community center.
Very good publicity on that, Carol. Okay. Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Name an address, please.
My name's Jack Stauffer. I live at 62 Sunnyside in Athens. I've lived in Athens since 1970. I always hate to come up here, because it's always a problem when I come up here. I hate to speak publicly, and I want to do the best I can to present my situation to you. I'm going to try to remain calm and talk slow. That's sometimes hard when I'm upset. I'm totally frustrated with the situation. I've got the blow-by-blow, day-by-day, conversation-by-conversation times, and what was said to each person during the last 10 days. I've been having a very bad experience with one of my properties in town. I'm not sure who makes the final decision. I'm not sure. The decision that I've been given so far is totally unacceptable to me. I'm going to explain my situation to you. I'm going to try to keep it within the 10 minutes. And at any point in time, if I'm not making myself clear, I want to answer questions. Because at the end of this meeting, I don't know if Mr. Hazlitt makes the final decision, or if Mr. Abel makes the final decision, or if the acting mayor makes the final decision. But I've been waiting 10 days on a final decision. And if the decision that I heard today was the final one, I don't like it, and I'm not going to accept it. And I'm here because I could have contacted you all privately. I could have contacted you all separately. But I thought that'd take too much time. And in the last 10 days, I've had conversations with Mr. Scott Lambert, Mr. Nick Carr, and Mr. Ray Hazlitt. They've all been polite to me. They've all been businesslike to me. And they've all told me an answer that I find totally unacceptable for my situation. I'm going to explain it to you. When I'm explaining it to you, I want you to pretend, as much as you may not want to, like you're me for these last 10 days. A week ago Friday, I'm in reference to my property at 72 North Court, which has two three-bedroom apartments in it and one barber shop. I started working for Mr. Strawn in 1970, so I've known about the building since 1970. I purchased the building in 1989. Over the years, I've done my very best to maintain and improve the building, rebuild the facade to meet the Zarni plan. I've remodeled the building twice. I've sprinkled the building. I take pride in my property, and I try to be a good landlord. I'm trying to be a good landlord tonight. I've been trying to be a good landlord for the last 10 days. The situation that I've been subjected to makes it impossible for me to refer to myself as a good landlord. Here's the deal. I've got the, after the meeting or during the meeting, we can go over all these conversations, if you wish. When I leave, I'd love to have a decision, a proper and fair decision. But here's the deal. A week ago Friday, my sewer line that exits the back of my building at 72 North Court failed to work. I've replaced every pipe in my building, including a couple feet outside of my building, with brand-new pipe over the years, the last improvement being done a year and a half ago. I've never had a drain problem in that building since 1970. I even had a tie-dye t-shirt shop in there for a number of years that had six washing machines in it, and the drains all worked fine. But last Friday, the drain plugged up. From the back of the building to the edge of my property line, measuring straight out, I own about 4 feet 8 inches. My lot is 20 feet wide. So maybe I own 10 feet this way. The pipe comes out pretty well in the center. And maybe I own 10 feet this way. That's the deal. The sewer line's plugged up. So, me being a licensed plumber in the city of Athens, I took the sewer cleaning equipment, and I rotted out the drain to approximately 100 feet. Now, from the back of my building, any way you slice it, I own about 12 feet to get off my property. I didn't measure how far it is to the edge of Fern Street, but we'll call it 35 feet. It doesn't matter. The line is 100 feet long, where it's collapsed, plugged up. It's failed to work. I called the sewage treatment plant. They put me in touch with Mr. Scott Lambert. Mr. Lambert came up with a sidekick. They looked at all their lines that they know about. They were polite to me. They really busted their butt. It was hot, it was stinky. Of course, I had crap all over me for the last six hours before they arrived. And they couldn't get the line. They checked all the city lines. They couldn't find anything wrong with any of the city lines that they were aware of. They were kind enough to put the big jet truck down, what we're going to refer to at this particular time as my line. I refer to my line as the first 12 feet, or maybe the first 35 if it goes to the edge of Fern Street. Nobody seems to know where it goes, including me. The line's plugged up. They ran their jet truck down it. They went 100 feet. They don't know where they were, but they got hung up. They got hung up so bad, they had to go back and get a backhoe and put a chain around the jet truck hose. And with much effort, they got it released. Mr. Lambert said, "Well, Jack, you probably have to put in a sewage ejector to pump the water out of your building." I said, "Well, no. No, that's not what I'm going to do." He said, "Well, we can meet with Nick Carr." I said, "That's what I want to do." He said, "I can get him down here tomorrow morning." I said, "That'll be fine, what time?" They called me the next morning. They came down. They looked at everything in the daylight. Of course, it was dark the night before. And Mr. Carr said, "Well, Jack, you're just going to have to put in a sewage ejector." For those of you who don't know what a sewage ejector is, that's a mechanical device. It's a pump to pump the stuff out of a pit that would be underground outside, up high enough to go into a city sewer line. Now, jumping off track slightly, referring back to, at some point in time, a number of years back, the city did a sewer project on Fern Street. Now, I can't remember the exact year. I've been informed by Mr. Carr that it was in 1995. I'm not sure of that, but we'll say it was '95. But in any event, I do recall at that time that they couldn't locate the sewer line going out of the back of my building. So I didn't get tied in to the new line that they put in in 1995. But, and I don't know if that was an in-house job or a contract job, and I guess I don't know and I don't care, but I didn't get tied in. And like everybody else, if it's not a problem, it's not a problem. Well, it wasn't a problem. Well, today, and for the last 10 days, it's a big damn problem. Because I've got two three-bedroom apartments and a barber shop. apartments and a barber shop. I've got the washing machine shut off, and I've tell, I've got girls in both apartments, and I've told them, "If you do number one, don't flush. If you do number two, flush, and we'll try not to get the basement flooded." So now outside the back door of my building, which is the front door to this nice apartment I built a year before last, I got a hole in the ground this far from the front door with sewage backed up in it, and it's been that way for the last 10 days. And like I say, Mr. Lambert's been polite to me, and he's made an effort. Mr. Carr's been polite to me, and he's made an effort. Mr. Hazlitt has been very polite to me, and he sat down and talked to me, and he understands my situation. And I can go through line by line the conversation because I wrote it all down because after the second day, I saw where this was headed, and it was not where I wanted to go. So after 10 days and several conversations, and, and Mr. Hazlitt's a nice gentleman, and he's been kind and gentle with me. But kind and gentle doesn't drain the crap out of my back of my building. And the same answer today is the same answer I got from Scott Lambert and Nick Carr a week ago Friday, 10 days ago, and that's, "Jack, you got to put in a sewage ejector." Now, Jack's been paying his property taxes ever since he's been in Athens. He's been paying his income taxes ever since he's been in Athens. He's been paying his water and sewer bills ever since he's been in Athens, and he thinks he's paid up to this day, and he thinks he's due to have a gravity drain out of the back of his building, just like everybody else in Athens has, who didn't know they were going to have to put in a sewer grinding system when they built their home. I bought a building with a drainage system, which was gravity, and that's what I want. So maybe you're thinking, "Well, why are you insisting?" Well, here's why I'm insisting. I got a little plumbing experience, and I know every time the electric goes off, that pump quits running. Except the people that are upstairs drinking beer and peeing and flushing, they're not stopping, so the basement's going to flood. Every time the electric goes off, the basement's going to flood. Now, if it was one of your folks' homes, or one of your folks' commercial buildings, or one of your folks' rental properties, I just think using logic and common sense, you'd be thinking, "What the hell? That's not what I want because it doesn't make any sense." So Mr. Hazlitt says to me in a very polite fashion, "Well, that's what you're going to have to do for temporary until we can figure out what's going on." And as I said to him in a previous conversation, I understand the wheels of government turn slowly. And he might have started to take offense at that, but I said, "I don't mean the city government of Athens. I just mean in general." But here's the deal. 10 days have gone by, zero results.
So Jack, yeah, so Jack, just to interrupt you a little bit, so what you're looking for is a gravity sewer that, that operates the way it did before the incident 10 days ago, right? At our?
That is ultimately what I want.
Okay.
That is ultimately what I bought and paid for in 1989, and that is what I've been paying fees on to maintain since 1989.
Okay.
And that's not what I've got.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Hazlitt says, "Jack, you put in a sewage ejector, and then that's all you ever have to pay for." Well, to hell with that. Why do I buy the sewage ejector and put it in to pump the crap out of my line that's going into your infrastructure that's falling apart around my building?
Okay.
Somebody, no, no, wait a minute. Now, hold on. I'm sorry.
Right.
Here's what I want to say. It's a unique, tough, hard logistical situation that they have down there on Fern Street. But I can't help that. I didn't cause it, and I'm the victim of it right at this time. So if somebody, here's what I want. In the, in the long term of this big, whatever you're ever going to do with the problems that you've got with the infrastructure, I don't want to be dragged down in that quagmire that's going to go for weeks, months, and years. It's been going on for weeks, months, and years. I have to assume it's going to continue on for weeks, months, and years in spite of everybody's best effort. If somebody's going to put in a sewage ejector temporarily to pump the crap out of my building into your sewer, then it's not going to be me because it's not my responsibility. My responsibility is to get a good pipe to the edge of my property. Now, and I'm very willing to do that. I got my checkbook right over there, and somebody spit out a price, and I'll write the check. But I want a system that works, and I want it fast. I don't, I don't want it, I don't want it in two years, or two months, or two weeks. I want to see somebody down there digging and something happening. And I don't think I'm being unreasonable other than getting a little upset at this time. Go ahead and speak. Somebody asked me a question, tell me something.
No, we probably, you know, I mean, I think you've given us lots and lots of information, maybe more than we needed because you, you have defined the problem very explicitly. Now, the question has to be, we have to have a discussion, I think, with Ray, maybe not in public, but.
May we have the discussion in private after this meeting?
Yes.
So the ball continues to roll?
Right. And it's by no means a simple problem with all of those buildings built behind the existing buildings back there. I think, you know, and as much as we would like to say we, there's a magic charm that we could move over it, I don't think it's going to happen. But if it's okay with you, Jack, if you'll have a seat, we'll talk at the, after this, okay?
I would, I want to talk, I'll be tickled to talk.
I mean, to talk about a solution, the remedy that you.
I want a solution, and I want a solution to come out of this meeting this evening because, because I got a, and I told you what I had to.
Yeah.
The best we can has to be make something work.
Okay.
Jack, we'll sit down right here.
Right here. There, we'll do it. Okay. Thank you very much. Other, other, other people wishing to speak, citizens? All right. Hearing none, we've completed our business. We are adjourned. Okay.